Ready when you are.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, Clay County Planning and Zoning Meeting. We have a few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear six cases. We will begin with a report from the Planning and Zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being The purpose of the Planning and Zoning Board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The Commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on March 15th, 2023, at 3:00 PM in this room. Could we begin tonight with the roll call attendants?
Yes, Chairman. Terry Griffin. David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Present. And could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our February 7th meeting as presented?
Moved to approve.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike, uh, sorry, Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Abstained.
Motion carries.
Very well, the first case we'll hear tonight is case number March 23-115-RZ/P. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report as part of official record.
So be it.
All right, so for our first case tonight is going to be Lincoln Acres. Currently, currently, it's one parcel, 76, almost 77 acres. It's unplanted, it's unagricultural, and access from J Highway or Clinton County Line Road. The proposal is to be, become two lots, one, the one lot that will be platted is going to be 13 and a half acres, zone residential rule. The remaining acreage, 60-plus acres, is going to be unplatted. And the, they do have an agricultural land preservation attached to this property. So that's going to be, um, the green part there is going to be the agricultural land preservation, and then obviously the blue there indicates the rest of the lot. All right, so this is going to be the surrounding areas. We got the proposed lot there, the remaining acreage. This is going to be J Highway. Up there is going to be the black line there is going to be Clinton County Line. So you can tell that this property is pretty far north. And then this shaded green area is going to be the Smithville Lake Reservoir. This parcel falls under the Natural Resources tier. In the Natural Resources tier, there's an exemption to the 20-acre minimum. If they, if it's five acres or more, it includes an agricultural land preservation. This is going to be your standard, um, there we go, that's going to be your standard, um, five rezoning criteria. We believe that this meets all five rezoning criterias. We haven't had any issues with it. See here, the, so far staffer, the staff has not received any opposition leading up to the planning and zoning meeting. It's been published in a newspaper, we posted a sign on the site, and there's been 10 certified letters sent. We had no objections from outside agencies. Modot's given the approval to get a driveway off of J Highway. Clay County Public Health Center has given preliminary and final approval. Clinton County Public Water District Number 4 indicated that there is a water main along J Highway and that they can provide water to the proposed lot. And Smithville Fire District is one that serves this area. Staff is recommending approval with the one condition, and that's changes to the recording copies of the plat. The applicant is present, and if the Commissioners have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do any board members have questions for staff regarding the application being heard?
No questions from staff. Is the applicant in attendance, if you want to step up to the podium?
Yes.
Yeah, you're the applicant for the rezoning?
Yes, I am.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Kenny Trump, 6174 Southwest Cook Road, Plattsburgh, Missouri.
Yep. All right, Kenny, do you understand the staff's report? Do you have any questions?
No. When you went to the piece that's going to be left, I noticed that the small piece in the corner was still white. That's all going to be one piece now. That two and a half acres, can you, can you pull up that one? Whoops, I see what you're doing. See the white where the house is below, right there? That is going to be included in the blue. It's all going to be Lincoln Acres. The new, the new legal includes that piece in that blue.
And from staff's perspective, that's fine, that's unplatted parcel that they, parcels that they can combine by legal description, and it meets, like Shane said, it meets one of the exemptions to being part of the plat.
So the 13.5 acres is the red area to the top or to the north?
The red area is a piece that we're rezoning now.
All right, I think we understand.
Okay.
Do you have, do you understand the staff's report? Do you have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions for you.
All right, very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? There's no further discussion from the board, I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of the Lincoln Acres. Moved to approve. Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I think we can roll right into the motion for preliminary plat, is that correct, Shane?
Yes.
Okay. I would call for the, a motion for the approval of the preliminary plat of Lincoln Acres with the, uh, one, uh, item attached in Exhibit A.
Moved to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next case we'll hear this evening is case number March 23-116F. And could we have a staff support?
Chairman, I'd like to add the staff reports for the official record.
So be it.
All right, so this is going to be the, the final plat for Lincoln Acres. Staff believes that this meets a section of the code, the 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code. We believe that the final is compliant with the preliminary. And again, our, we recommend an approval with the one condition, and that's changes to the recording copies of the plat. If the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right. All right, thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the final plat of Lincoln With no discussion from the board, if the applicant would step up to the podium, please? And could you state your name and address, sir?
Kenny Trump, 6174 Southwest Cook Road, Plattsburgh, Missouri.
Yep. Mr. Trump, right now, we're hearing the final plat of Lincoln Acres, and you understand the staff's report, and you have any questions for staff?
I do not have any questions for you.
All right. All right, very well, thank you, sir.
And I thank you, guy.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, is there any additional discussion the board would like to have with staff regarding the final plat of Lincoln Acres? With no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the final plat of Lincoln Acres with the conditions attached, is set out in Exhibit A.
Moved to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number March 23-117CUP. And could we have a staff support, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
All right, so this is a request for conditional use permit renewal. Oh, sorry. So currently, as it sets, or what this conditional use permit is, it's for a commercial recreational equipment and vehicle storage facility. That's how it is existing currently. The parcel size is 23 acres. This was platted back in January 2004 as Paradise South, replatted in 2015, and then replatted again in 2016, which is what this, what this property is showing here. The conditional use permit approval is what was approved in 2003, then again in 2010, and 2015, 2016 as well. It's currently zoned Community Service or C3. They have access off Collins Road. And again, this is a renewal of what is currently existing. They are, there will be a name change on it as well. It's currently being purchased by another company. That's why we're having to go through this process. I will say that they, again, they aren't making any major changes to this. It's pretty standard and pretty standard for our process. They submitted the, the business plan, and that should be a part of the staff report as well. This is what, you know, our surrounding area, if you guys aren't familiar with it, we got, you know, the paradise here, and then we got some commercial zone, I believe this is the, the fire station, this is the captain's corner, and some other commercial businesses here, W Highway, and then obviously the Smithville Lake surrounding it. We have a different set of criteria compared to what we do for our rezonings for conditional use permit. Staff believes that it meets the conditional use, conditional use permit requirements because it was approved by the County Commission before and the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. So again, we haven't seen any changes, and if there were to be major changes to this, they would have to come back in front of the board again and apply for a conditional use permit. We haven't received any opposition leading up to this meeting. We, again, we published this in the newspaper, signed, posted on site, sent out 43 certified letters. We haven't had any objections from outside agencies. Again, this is an existing driveway, so Highway Department had no objections. Clay County Public Health was not required because they, they currently do not have a septic system there. Clinton County Water District Number 4 currently has water services at that subject property, so we didn't need a parole from them, and then Smithville Fire District service area. Their staff is recommending approval. There is, with 11 conditions, I kind of highlighted a couple here. You know, conditional use permit shall be issued for 15 years. And then, once approved, this conditional use permit is non-transferable, therefore, if ownership changes, a new conditional use permit must be filed with the Clay County Planning and Zoning Office. The applicant is here, and staff would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? I've got a question for you. Shane, on page seven of the staff's report.
All right.
Item number two, it's, uh, transferring ownership of Lot Number One. Is Lot Number One, does that capture all of the 23.3 acres?
Yes, it does. So it used to be three, or three lots, and then they combined it with replats. I think it was, it was replatted, and they made two lots, and then they replatted again and made it one contagious parcel.
Okay, very good.
And can I add something, Chairman? So the, the way the current code is written, the CUP is tied to the individual. So anytime ownership changes with the way the Land Development Code is written, we have to come back through this process. So that's kind of why, you know, Shane alluded to that. And I can't stress enough that there's no, basically no changes at this point. If they want to add structures, they're going to have to renew the conditional use permit again. The adjacent property owners will get sent a letter at that point if we're talking about additional structures, additional traffic, things like that.
So the only thing really changing, number one, I guess, is the renewal, and the, but the owner is changing, and that's it?
Yeah, the owner's changing, and this would extend it an additional 15 years if they don't make additional changes within that 15 years.
I think if I was in the buyer's position, I'd want a 15-year CUP before I made an investment, so. So do the, any board members have questions for staff? If the applicant's present, if you could step up to the podium, state your name and address, please?
Daniel Wotazek. My address is 2707 Cole Ave, Apartment 734, Dallas, Texas.
And Daniel, do you understand the staff's report? Do you have any questions for staff?
I do understand, and I have no questions.
All right. Do any board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? No discussion of anyone in the audience who'd like to comment that opposes the application Do we have any additional discussion from the board for the staff or applicant? Well, I would call for a motion to approve the renewal of the conditional use permit for the commercial recreational equipment and vehicle storage facility with the conditions attached, set out in Exhibit A.
Moved to approve with the conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number March 23-118RZ/P. And could we have a staff report, please?
I would like to add this staff report as far as official record.
So be it.
All right, so this case here is going to look fairly familiar. We heard this, something similar back in January. This is Quail Run Farms. Currently, it's unplatted. It's 49, 49 acres, zone agricultural, and partially, or in zone residential ranchette, which is what was approved back in January. There is currently one single family residence on the property, and it's located off of Plattsburgh Road. This is going to be the proposal, so it's going to look very similar to what was approved back in January. What happened was there was, they wanted to move a property line a few feet over, that's why we're having to redo this process. So there, in that orange color, that's going to be the proposed lot. And then the work there in the blue color is going to be the other lot or the unplatted parcel. The platted lot's going to be, you know, five, a little bit over five and a half acres. The unplatted's going to be 43. The unplatted meets one of our exemptions to plating because it's over the 40-acre mark. They are including an agricultural land preservation for the platted lot, and there is an existing house on the platted lot as well. All right, so this is what the surrounding area looks like. You can see right across the street here, there's some three to five acre lots running along the Plattsburgh Road and quite a bit of ag land. This is a little bit further north of Clay County. This is going to be the subject parcel, and then the unplatted here. This, this property falls under the, in the comp plan, under the rural density tier. Again, the exception to, to the 20-acre minimum is that it's five-plus acres with an agricultural land preservation. This is the standard rezoning criteria. This, this case met it back in January, and it still meets. So as, as of this meeting, or before this meeting, we haven't received any opposition to it. It's been published in the newspaper, signed, posted on site, 14 certified letters. We haven't had any objections from the Highway Department. They've given that approval for a driveway off of Plattsburgh Road. Clay County Public Health Center has given their preliminary and final approval. Clay County Public Water District Number 4 indicated that they can provide water to the existing house. And the property, the unplatted property, they can provide a water meter to that as well. The Hope Fire District serves this area, and this is one of the rare ones. Staff is recommending approval with no conditions, so. If the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, and the applicant is present.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do any board members have questions for staff regarding the application being heard? Very well, if the applicant's present, if you could step up to the podium, please?
Tom Glennon, I request that you approve this tonight.
Could you state your address? State your address, please, Mr. Glennon.
Pardon me?
Could you state your address, please?
17815 Plat, well.
All right.
The address of this is not where I am now. We just moved down the street.
Yep. Okay, very well. Do you understand staff's report?
Yes.
Do you have any questions for the staff?
No, I thank him for the work.
Okay. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Tom. Don't, don't go far, we'll be calling you up again, so.
I'll be right here.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that supports the application being heard tonight? With none, is there any one in the audience who'd like to comment that opposes the application being heard? If there's any further discussion from the board regarding the application? With none, I would call for a approval of the preliminary plat of Quail Run, and we have no conditions to attach.
Yeah, so let's keep, let's do the rezoning first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're, you're, you're fast forwarding.
My bad, I'll call for a motion to approve the rezoning of Quail Run Farm.
Moved to approve.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to go ahead and call for a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Quail Run Farm, and there is no conditions to attach.
Moved to approve.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number March 23-119F. And could we have a staff's report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report as far as official record.
So be it.
All righty, so this is going to be the final plat for Quail Run Farms. You know, we believe it meets the section of code, the 151-3.6D. We believe the final plat is compliant with the preliminary, and staff is recommending approval with, that needs to be removed from the, excuse me, needs to be removed from the slide, but recommending approval, so.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the application being With none, would the applicant please step up to the podium?
Tom Glennon.
Could you have your address, please?
17815 Plattsburgh Run.
All right, thank you, Tom. And do you understand the staff's report regarding the final plat?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Do any board members have questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, if there's no further discussion, I would call for a motion to approve the final plaid of Quail Run Farm.
Move to approve.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, you guys are good. If you want, you're welcome to stay, or you can leave, whatever your choice. The next case we'll hear tonight is case number February 23-114A. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So when we decided to redo the bylaws, we weren't aware that we had the opportunity to transition to a different section of state statutes that the Planning and Zoning Department and Commission could follow. So with the county becoming a charter form of government, there's a different section of state statutes that changes several things and gives us the opportunity to change our code and streamline some of our processes. So the, what Cheryl passed out to you shows, and it's on the screen now as well, it shows how the Planning and Zoning Commission would change. Right now, it's made up of the Highway Administrator, five unincorporated citizens, one from each township. Those are nominated by the presiding commissioner and approved by the County Commission. The new state statutes that we're going to transition to following would change that to still be the Highway Administrator, be six unincorporated citizens, so we add a citizen, but it's, there's no township requirement. So that takes, makes it a little bit easier on us, where we can have two members from one township if we choose to. It also adds a County Commissioner to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there's two spots for chairpersons from a city planning commission, so like Liberty, Smithville, but it has to be their planning chairperson. My personal opinion, it's going to be hard to fill those two positions. So I don't know that we'll ever get to 10, but that's, that's how the commission is to be made up. So I would expect, possibly by next month, we'll have some new members. I expect our sitting members to stay, and to go along with that, we're going to update the bylaws and the Land Development Code, because the new statutes will allow us to rework how we do some of our cases. So an example would be tonight, like the Quail Run Farm, where the reason that case was back in front of you is they got approved, and then, for whatever reason, they decided to move the property lines, the plaid that the County Commission approved didn't match the plaid they wanted to record. So we are going to be able to have some cases that staff would be able to approve without either coming to Planning and Zoning Commission or going to County Commission. We believe we'll also be able to create some cases that just go to Planning and Zoning Commission, but don't have to go to County Commission, depending if they meet certain criteria. Obviously, the controversial cases will still go to Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission, but if people are combining lots, creating like that one 13-acre lot where there's no opposition, it would get people through the process quicker. We would still notify the adjacent property owners, but it would allow us to kind of streamline our processes. So what we are requesting of the Planning and Zoning Commission today is to table the bylaws indefinitely until we have the Land Development Code amendments ready, and we'll bring the bylaws and the LDC amendments back together, and then we'll discuss them, get your input, and you can make amendments or revisions, and we'll get public input at that point. So be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of where we're at at this point.
So let me get this straight. You're putting a little common sense into the process where it don't have to be so complicated?
That's what we're attempting to do, and we couldn't do that with the old state statutes because it did not, the new state statutes create a zone, anti-enforcement officer, I think is what it's called. And the County Commission appoints that enforcement officer. We would, typically, that would be my position, and it gives that enforcement officer more power to approve things. So I think it's going to be a good thing. Now, it's going to be cumbersome because we have more members, but I think it'll help the citizens and, yes, give it some common sense, yes, so.
So I'm thinking that your P&amp;Z's budget was approved to have the LDC or the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan updated, but to update the bylaws, you're wanting to wait until the Comprehensive Plan and the LDC are updated and final draft approved?
We are not going to wait for the comp plan, so we're going to do a specific LDC revision that is most likely going to involve about three chapters that's specific to this change and streamlining our processes. We want to adopt the, so the comp plan is part of this year's budget. It'll probably, most likely be approved next year. At that point, we would overhaul, do a complete overhaul of the Land Development Code. We want the LDC to kind of match the comp plan once it's approved.
I thought the wheels were in motion to overhaul the LDC and comp plan now.
They are, but the LDC is going to take longer than the comp plan.
Okay.
I only have, unless you want, unless you can clone Shane. If you can do that, then we'll have a better chance.
I got a question. You know, we talked about it once before, and I don't know which part of it on the overhaul, but going back on some of the subdivisions that used to be in the county, where they'd have the Chip and Seal Road and have your grass waterways and everything, and not doing all the street and curb and all that, you know, farms that we've, grass farms, that we've farmed, two of them in the last two years, and they got strung out into 20-acre tracks, long and narrow, and if those things could have had a road gone through, you know, it wouldn't have wasted so much ground.
So that will be, items like that need to be addressed in the Comprehensive Plan. So I...
Because it costs so much money, the way that the county's set up to do it now, that no farm can ever be done. That's how come everybody just starts running off the roads, and they'll do a 20-acre track long ways back, and, you know, if you're going to put it in development, at least take full advantage of the piece of ground instead of, because most everybody will sit there and take care of the first front three acres, and then let the back ten grow up into trees.
So just a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Commission will have final say on the comp plan, so that will come in front of this board. The County Commission will make a recommendation to you as to whether they think the draft should be approved once it's ready, but that will be part of that discussion. We foresee that the, so the county is hiring a consultant to basically work with the county to redo the comp plan, and we would expect them to give the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission updates through that process. You'll know kind of what's occurring with the update of the comp plan.
So David, are you saying like, if we got 80 acres, we want to spread it up into five acre tracks, that could just be a chip seal road? But if we've got 20 acres, we want to break them into one acre tracks, then that would be an asphalt curb gutter?
It's kind of like the Porter Farm up there. It was like 160 acres, and that thing, the guy out of Warrensburg did it. And...
And yeah, Andy's probably right. I think this is a discussion for another day when we have something that's more relevant, whether it's the comp plan or the LDC amendment, but that will be part of those discussions.
Yeah, okay.
And feel free to call me at the office if you have ideas, and we can discuss as well. So again, our request is to indefinitely table the bylaws so they can come back with the LDC revision, okay? Not the full LDC revision, but one specific to this and streamlining our processes.
We call for a motion to continue the update to Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws indefinitely. A motion to approve. The second?
Second.
And we're for both. David, you have a final request?
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll discuss. We will. We did receive at least a couple of applications, so we will have a meeting next month. We'll work on getting passwords reset. If you were able to get logged in today, please remember your password. And again, if you're more comfortable with paper copies, just Cheryl will have paper copies. I know there's a lot of, every time we come, there's more technology sitting on the desk here, so we want you to be comfortable. So if you're not comfortable using the computers, let us know, and we'll do what we can do. And updates as well from last month, it looks like McKinney Family Farm. Basically, all the cases from last month were approved. No issues with County Commission with last month's cases, so that, I think that's all staff has.
Does counsel have any thoughts or comments on the, up in the P&amp;Z to 10 members?
Nothing for executive.
Alright, no further business, no additional business before, so we'll adjourn the meeting.